...to the October 11, 2017 Neshoba Regional School Committee meeting. This is a regular meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. The first item on the agenda as always is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? We have citizens, but we don't have comments, okay? School committee chairs is -- chairs. The school committee chair updates is the next one. I've got three really quick things, or actually four quick things. Just a reminder to the chairs of the subcommittees that your minutes need to be updated and in the packet, and I think personnel's all set, finance is pretty good, I mean, policy's set, finance is good, and personnel, when are we going to review those?
Monday.
Monday, okay, perfect. So then we'll be all --
We'll be all Friday.
Perfect, thank you. And then every meeting, we're going to go over this 12-month calendar because as you know, it's going to shift and change. There were a couple of changes. They're reflected on the agenda for tonight. The OEPED Trust meeting is the one item on that section for October that we don't have a date, but Pat's going to come up later on and talk to us about that, and so we'll get to that. And then the only other thing I have is that last week, the school district hosted the tri-town meeting for the first time, and it was a very informative meeting. Thank you very much, Alina Superintendent Clinchy, for all the work that you did, including getting our goals and our operating protocols up, and it was really lovely. I think it was nice. Everybody kind of had a chance to mill around and talk afterwards. It was really, really well received. And I think moving forward, I'll be putting regular items on those tri-town meetings to make them a little bit more relevant, because while we would like people to watch our meetings, read our minutes, come to the meetings, we know that they may not, and because these are these folks that attend the meetings, our leadership in the towns, will be bringing some of the highlights of what's happening in the district from the previous month and what may be coming up to them, so there are no surprises. But it was very well received, so thank you. And thank you to all the school committee members that did show up to that meeting. Strong representation. Okay, and whoever's phone that is, feel free to answer it outside. And student representative report, do we have a student?
Yes, our regular representative had a field hockey game tonight, so Elena Naes is stepping in. Elena is a journalism student who also is a member of the drama club, and she's going to deliver this month's report.
So Elena, take a deep breath right now. Take a deep breath, it's okay. And come on up to the table so you can feel like a little bit less intimidated from speaking over there. And thank you for filling in, and we're looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
From the athletics department, the fall season, the golf team is seven, four, and one, and will be competing in the Mid Lodge B League Championship next Monday at the Creepin' Keys. The boys and girls cross-country team finished off their regular season this week. The team will be competing in the league championship on October 28. Volleyball team has improved 11 and 4 and has clinched a playoff spot. The team raised over $3,500 that has been donated to the American Cancer Society in memory of Michelle Feinsworth and the Jimmy Fund in memory of Lou Pepper. The boys soccer team beat Groton last week to earn their first win. The girls soccer team has improved nine, one, and one, and clinched a playoff spot with their win last night over Marlboro. Both soccer teams are hosting youth nights this Saturday for youth players throughout the district. The field hockey team is eight oh and two and is hosting Shrewsbury tonight for their play for Cure Pink Night, and the team participated in Making Strides for Breast Cancer Walk in Boston to raise money for cancer research. And tonight, the team is raising money to be donated to the Healing Garden Cancer Support Center in Harvard. Also tonight is the youth night at the game where our youth team in the district will be playing at halftime. Lastly, our football team is now five and oh and hosts North Middlesex on Friday night. With a win on Friday, our team should clinch a playoff spot. In addition, Friday night is Youth Cheer Football Night at Neshoba. For the music department, this past Friday, 7th through 12th grade instrumental students from across the district participated in the Fourth Annual Neshoba Band Day. This was a great event, and we had close to 30 middle school students join our pep band for the football game. More than 20 members from the Florence Sawyer Chorus have been asked to sing the National Anthem at the Providence Bruins game this Saturday, October 14. They will be recognized by the Providence Bruins and be able to watch the game as well. Members of the United States Marine Corps Band will be visiting the high schools to provide a performance and masterclass for students in our high school performing osbals. The clinic will take place in the auditorium on Thursday, October 19 at 9:00 a.m. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
So take a bow. You did a great job. Thank you very much. Anybody here? Oh, no, 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 no. No, 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 no. Does anybody have any questions? You did a fabulous job.
You did terrific.
Thank you. Okay, now you get to go. Thanks, Dad. Thanks for bringing her. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a guest presentation today from Jody Speck, who's the director of guidance of the high school. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Clinchy.
Sure, and I'm not sure, do you want to join us as well for this? So Jody's going to present along two lines tonight. The first is kind of a classic line gives you a broad overview of some of the scores that have come to him, and kind of benchmark it. It's my understanding that she's very often done this kind of thing, but hasn't for the past couple of years. So we're thrilled to have her back. And when she first brought the scores to me, I said, "Oh, my gosh, yes, we've got to put these scores up right away." So our September meetings were just too full, so we're so grateful that she could come in to watch over. And the second piece that she's going to talk about is the youth mental health first aid. And she first approached me about this, I guess, the summer of Jody, right, when we first talked about it? And to us, it felt like it fit in beautifully dovetailed with the work that we wanted to do with the youth Emerson survey. The work is dovetailed really beautifully. So a really nice opportunity came about. Jody's going to speak to that. She attended some professional development. Then we ended up choosing two candidates to send from our district to get qualified and trained, so that they could be the train-to-train our models, to push some of this work out. But I think you're going to find it really fascinating. I'm very excited about that particular initiative for us. So two very different takes that she's going to come from tonight. So Jody, we turn it over, and we thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So yes, this was more the college readiness. I don't know why I called it that, except that I was looking at some AP scores and a college board thing. It's not really college readiness. Brooke looked at the AP scores that we have, and I'll pass around this for those of you like me who have a hard time with small print. This is the same thing as your slot, the next slide, but bigger print. These are the Neshoba scores. So these are our raw numbers. A three is considered a passing score and recommended by college board that a college give credit for it, okay? Over on the right, you can see in gray, this is the total group, because it is multinational, primarily a U.S. test, but it's more of a bell curve, Neshoba's goes up. And when you're looking at these numbers, these are last year's scores. We had 305 students take 584 exams. And you can see 2% were ones, 8% were twos, 90% are threes and higher, okay? So those are the percentiles over on the right.
How do we compare to the state?
Well, you guys see that?
Okay.
So, okay, if you'd like to look at this, and that's what I just handed out, because again, it's a great visual. It just doesn't translate for those of us who need bifocals.
It is really a wow. You need to sit and take it in. It is a wow moment.
So what this is, is the total number of kids who took an AP exam and scored a three or higher. It's a five-year look back. Neshoba's in blue. We're consistently in the 90s. The state's consistently in the 70s.
Low 70s.
And the low 70s, and the total group is in the 60s.
Low 60s.
Okay.
A little bit of pride there, go on there.
A little bit of pride, yeah.
So it's the total number, it's the number of students with at least one, three or higher, over the total number of students who took the exam, okay? So then we go to the next piece, which is, this is looking at the percent of students in green by state, percent of total students who took an AP exam, okay? In red, now, New England Board of Higher Ed has titled this wrong. It's not the percent of students who scored a three or higher S of all students who took the AP exam, but of all, of all students, okay? So basically, within Massachusetts, 45% of the kids take an AP test, and this is going to include a lot of our very selective privates, and 32% of them score a three or higher, okay? If we look over to the right, I wanted to look at Neshoba. In 2017, 305 kids of our roughly 1,000 took an AP exam for a participation rate of 30%, which I think is pretty good. And I looked back, and often when I do these presentations and I look back, I think to, well, when this graduating class first started in our school system, so 12 years ago, what did it look like? When these kids start, joined elementary school in the district, we had an 18% participation rate. So it's gone up to 30%. We still consistently score, 90% or higher are scoring a three, four, or five. Keep in mind that those are the scores where you get college credit, okay? When we look at the, just the graduating class, we have 67% of our graduated seniors last year scored a three or higher on an AP exam before they graduated. And again, we've gone up. When these kids started in elementary school, that was 45% of the graduating seniors took an AP exam and scored a three or higher. So we've increased our participation significantly, and we've held the results steady. And for me, I like this a lot. I don't personally want AP to be your top 5% of the class. You know, I worry about AP pressure. Everybody knows that. But I like the experience of everybody getting to try out an AP class and having a great shot at a good grade to bring in for credits with them. One of the ways, not on here, that we've expanded this is working with QuinSigammon. We have an English class where kids who are not necessarily in an AP class, but this English class is dual-credit with QuinSigammon. So the work they're doing in AP, the curriculum has been handheld with QuinSig, they will earn three credits from QuinSig as a transcript when they walk out of here. And again, it's that sense of spreading. I know that our kids go off and do great. I have kids who go off to community colleges for a variety of reasons. Maybe they've been struggling for whatever reason, and their grades don't look like your typical AP kid at a, you know, transcript. They do fabulous. So we're looking to expand these opportunities.
So I want to stop you right there, and just, and I'm going to, I'm going to make some assumptions that I, based on what you just said. And I think everybody needs to keep front and center that, I think what Jody's saying is, we're not talking about the kids who are taking the most rigorous courses in school, the kids who are really zeroed in on that. We're talking about, you know, the kids that are decent students, that are also trying these classes out.
Yes, nearly 70% of your class.
So what that says is, stop the madness with, oh, everybody's focused just on this end of the spectrum. And we talked last year and the year before, Jody, when you came in, about how do we pull that through the rest of the population of the students in the grade? What you're telling us is that that's what's happening.
Yes.
I think that's really got, we've got our, we've all got to recognize that and hold on to that, because that's a big deal.
It is, and it's one of the things I'm proud about Neshoba is that we, you know, and it's reflected in our curriculum, it's reflected in scholarships. It's not just about the top 5% of academicians. It's about the whole kids and kids having opportunities and really being able to achieve in a lot of different levels. You look at that AP computer science course, that everybody scored a three or higher. Nationally, that was not the, not the way it went first year out. We had two classes of it. We had a variety of kids in there, variety of math abilities. Everybody got a three or higher. I can't tell you the smiles that they have. Do you know what I mean? Not everybody is, I certainly am not suited to do BC calculus, you know, or physics, mechanical physics, that's kind of, I mean, but we've got those available for those hardcore academicians in those realms. But we have the breadth out there, too.
And then Quin, I just want to get a better understanding of what the QuinSig partnership program is. What type of kid is attracted, student, what type of student is attracted to that program? Because I don't have my head wrapped around that.
So everybody takes a senior English, and they're done by topical choices. And we created one that is, that embedded within it is QuinSig's English Comp 101. So there I have a variety of assignments and instructional time, and we can't exceed instructional time. There's a lot of parameters around it. And our goal, we invite, I mean, it was open to everybody. So I have a couple of students who are taking it because they know that their parents have multiple kids in college, and they're looking to bring in credits, but they're not AP students, AP English students. But I have other kids who don't see themselves as strong academic kids, but their teachers do. And we have pulled them in. We have other kids who want to take the course because, ooh, that's kind of neat. So it has appealed to the kids who are not your traditional AP kids.
Well, that's really, that's really awesome.
And the teachers have, the teacher has really modified her instruction, because again, a college course only has a certain number of hours of instruction, and we can't exceed that. And they have certain assignments and rubrics and things like that to go on.
Great, okay. Neil?
You know, kudos, kudos, kudos. Teachers, administration, the water we drink in the three towns, whatever, but, and not to belittle any of that. But like, what's the secret sauce behind that? Is it academic programming, like you were just talking about there? Like people taking the coursework and creating a more challenge or robust sort of approach for the kids that draw the kids in? Is it, and I'm not, I'm just trying to figure this out, because we statistically are really high here. Is it the demographics of the people that live within these three towns that are bringing that forward? You know, and what can we, based on that, do to help the 30% that still, like, I guess, how do we pull that through that 30% that we're missing?
Well, continue the work, right?
Well, I have a dream. Our first conversation with this, I have a dream that we would have an English, a math, a science, and a history partnership with the community college. I don't see why we can't do Psych 101, and we can't do an environmental science, and you know, all of that needs to be worked out, and there's, the state is promoting the partnerships, but you know, we'll see how things roll out with this. But I think that we have, it's a little bit of everything. We have motivated kids, we have high expectations, we have caring teachers, we have curriculum that is meant to reach everybody, that, it's not a, one of the things, it's not just a generic senior English. Lots of schools, kids hit senior year, they take the year for it lit. Our teachers design electives to appeal to the kids, to keep them writing, to keep them reading, to keep them engaged.
So if I hear you right, you're telling me there's also a change in the curriculum, the way things have been taught in the past, and this is evolving, that's drawing the numbers that are keeping the percentages high? I mean...
I think it's been, Neshoba's been like this for a long time. I think we've taken a really concerted and careful look at, we know that we're going to, the high-achieving kids are going to find their place at Neshoba. And I think it goes back years that we have worked on being there and being, serving the whole population.
Wonderful, thank you.
I think it's part of the personality of Neshoba, to be honest with you.
Okay, great.
Excuse me. So, next, this is just, you know, these are numbers, people like AP awards. These are kind of cool, and it does kind of take my breath away. The AP scholars are three exams or more with threes. Honors is a 3.25 on at least four exams. Distinction, 3.5 on all exams with at least five exams. And look at that. 39 kids have an average score of at least a 3.5 on five or more exams. Holy cow, you know? And then the national AP scholars, which is eight or more exams. You know, takes my breath away, really does. National merit is just a forever, there's always national merit out there. This is off of the PSATs, and what they do is they, state by state, they take the top percentile. And Massachusetts has been the number-one state for many years. I've never seen it out of the top three. So the score that you need to hit to become a national merit, commended student or semifinalist is much higher in Massachusetts than it is, say, in Arkansas or Picklewood or State. Pretty significantly higher. And that's going to vary year to year, and it's going to vary partly based on our pool of kids and partly on who else is in the state. But this is off of the PSAT, so it's one Saturday morning exam, but it's a good national measure. And now, because I wouldn't be guidance if I didn't talk about college applications, I know that's the whole thing, but I, again, I'm looking at the 12-year span, and I find it interesting. We can see that application submission has gone up a little bit, from under 800 to, what have we, we almost hit 1,600 two years ago, 1,500? And the accepted rate is staying roughly the same, okay?
That just means more work for you guys.
It is definitely more work for us, and it's getting crazier, because it's getting earlier and earlier.
Can I ask you something about that?
Yeah.
Does that represent, in your guess, more applications from approximately the same number of kids, or both that and rising number of application, applying individuals, or some other?
The lists have gotten bigger, okay? So you can see, 2005, we had 4.2 apps per student, now we're at 5.6. But what's happening is that we've now, us, regular terminology, we talk about financial safeties, and we talk about schools where you might get merit eight. The cost in these 12 years has gone from probably $45,000 to $60,000. I mean, it's, the cost of private schools has gone up tremendously. So kids do have bigger lists. I used to cringe when they went over six. Now eight, nine, 10 is not uncommon. And if a student's looking further away, geographically, they might be doing that because, I want to go to Florida, I want to go to California. But that's not as common as kind of knowing that if I go out of region, I'm a more desirable candidate in the applicant pool, okay? When you're in region, the university's getting a lot of people like you. When you're out of region, you're a little more interesting. So our kids are going to more schools. They're applying to more schools, and they're spreading out So this, again, I thought was interesting. These were the top 20 most applied to schools. I took a four-year band, because I don't think any one class really shows you anything. So 12 years ago, when that, when the just-graduated class started elementary school with us, that's what the most applied to profile looked like. And then when this graduating class, you know, what their four-year band looks like. And it's not all that different, you know? I think that, you know, our admit rate at UMass has gone down some, but it's gotten way more competitive to get into, you know? None of this was a huge surprise. I was, well, I guess I would say I was surprised it hadn't changed as much. And when I look at the next slide, which is the most-attended school, I think this is, this explains it a little bit better for me. The lists are not all that different. If you look down at the very bottom, 12 years ago, nine of the most-attended were four-year privates. In this past, six of the most-attended were four-year privates, and we have an increase in the out-of-state publics. So the flagship universities have really stepped up their game. UNH has become more of a player, stronger in business, stronger in engineering, nursing, out of this world. So our kids are looking at that, knowing that maybe they can't get into those programs at UMass, because UMass is stratophoric to get into, their engineering and their business programs. So they're looking at the other flagships. Those schools tend to be $10,000, $15,000 more per year, but not $40,000 more per year, okay? And that decrease in the number of privates in those most-attended, I think it's significant to go from nine to six, just in a, in a snapshot of 20 schools. So now, the piece that Brooke talked about, so this is a program that is, and I have a little handout, because again, I can't, I'm not great with my PowerPoints, but it's not the whole big thing. So what this is, youth mental health first aid is a program that was developed in Australia and is now in, I think, 13 countries. This July, the U.S. hit 1 million trained adults in this. And so what it is, is not for everybody to become a counselor, but much as if somebody was having a heart attack or choking, people know how to provide first aid real quick. That's what this is about. And so what are the signs that might worry me? How do I assess, is this crisis or concerning? Give some encouragement to the student, or the youth, maybe refer to help, or pull in help if it's a crisis, okay? So Diana Dur, who's a social worker, Katie Abruzzi is a guidance counselor, and I, this summer, all went and we took this course, okay? Subsequent to that, Brooke approved having Katie and Diana train as instructors. They went off for a five-day course. They are now certified instructors in this course. And for, in an eight-hour training, you become certified. So what they will give us, our staff, we will get certified. It's a three-year certification, renewable every three years with online courses. One of the things that impressed me about this program is that there's a boatload of research on its efficacy, all right? The results are lasting. Teaching people how to reach out to a child who's struggling, they remember it, and they're not afraid to do it. And that includes everybody in the child's life. So there are schools, and I hope we become one, where every adult in the school community takes this training. And that's the classroom teachers, that's administration, cafeteria workers, coaches, everybody takes this training, and everybody is there and knows when they see something, how to then approach the child and help dice out, is this crisis or concerning, and where do we go from here, okay? There is a lot of fidelity to the curriculum on this. There's not, we're not teaching people to become counselors. A lot of the instruction is about, you're not a counselor. This is at the point where you need to pull somebody in, or you need to refer. A lot of it is about helping students to recognize that maybe when it's a concerning issue and not a crisis, that they have a skill set, and how do they bring themselves down, and who can they identify as an adult that they can then speak to about this? It's just, Brooke knows, I feel very passionately about this, and I, you know, another dream of mine is that Neshoba becomes one of those schools where that's the expectation. And when we hire new teachers in, part of new teacher training is to become youth mental health first aid certified. It goes through, I can tell you that you go through the warning signs of a variety of issues, from depression, from self-injury, eating disorders. And the way that the instruction works, it's all role-playing. So they're teaching you, and then they're giving you a scenario. And Neil and I might need to decide, ooh, how are we going to approach this child, and we talk about it. And then they teach you a little more, kind of a little more serious. And then there's another role-play. And so doing this, you really get to talk through how you would handle this, okay?
And for those of us who've been on the school committee begging for it for nine, six years, and thank you so much, Jody. I'm going to take questions, but I just want to put this out there. Thank you so much for the focus in the district improvement plan on social-emotional learning. It has to become fabric of the culture of the district. One of the things that I do in my private life is use this type of information for adults and work with companies, large organizations and their benefits groups. And a lot of the Fortune 100 companies are now bringing programs like this in for adults. How do you recognize? How do you recognize the signs? How do you, so what's happening at the school level and the public schools, kind of like in a really, kind of encouraging way for me, is for us to be on the forefront of this because usually it's the corporate organization that's kind of leading things, and they're just now starting to do it. So I would love, and I know you're going to say something, I would love for us to become that flagship school. I would love for us to be able to get out into the community once our own people are trained and share it with parents and community members.
So Diana and Katie are now certified to teach anybody. So part of what Burke and I talked about was, if I may, was offering this to community members. And so we could open this up, and interested adults in the community can be trained. This doesn't need to be just school-bound. I would love to see school committee members trained. I would certainly want all of administration trained. I think that, I just, I...
Is there a specific parent component to this? Or is it, they would be like people in the community?
Yep, anybody. Parents, police officers, anybody.
Oh, peers in the school, is there a component for peers?
Nope. They, the, this program has a different curriculum for adult mental health first aid. And I believe there's a separate, there's separate versions for training, like if you want to train your whole police force. But it's first aid. It's not how to deal with things.
Right.
It's how to talk to the...
It's triage.
Right. How do I assess, is this concerning or is it crisis? How do I listen to the student about what's really going on without trying to tell them what's going on? Do you know what I mean? Give them reassurance about, other people face this, hear some information about it. Encourage them to seek extra help, you know? And give them referrals and support strategies. And part of this is also having resources and building up red flags and resources kind of thing. So that it's there and available.
Neil?
So two things. You know, I take a personal pride in the SRO over at the high school and the amount, the level of involvement that they have with the school community and the professionalism and so on. I imagine they're probably going to be going through something like this if they haven't already. Go through something like this?
Our girls have just been trained.
Okay.
So...
Which is awesome.
Yes. We haven't, I have a, we have, we're, Joan DeAngelis and I have been trying to set up a meeting to talk about how will this break out into professional development? And that's our first step because of the scheduling of PD in the district. Anything that comes outside of that timeframe is easier for us to schedule.
Sure. Thank you. And the second thing is, I've been around for two of the Emerson Youth Risk Surveys now. And, you know, the first one bothered me, the second one bothered me even more, the most recent one. And I think this answers a lot of that social safety net that we were talking about, that that component's been sort of missing. And I hugely appreciate the fact that this is being addressed. It's just 12 to 18-year-olds. And I know that on the Youth Risk Survey, we were talking about some of the younger kids down in fifth, sixth grade that are really falling into that risk situation. Is this something that's going to spread down to the middle?
I think what Jody and I talked about, and Jody correct my phone a little bit, I think the notion is we'll try to be really successful with starting small and building it out. So I think that, I think we just want to take it a piece at a time to be successful. But I think ultimately, we would love to see that become, that spread down.
Right, I'm like you, Neil. I want everybody who works with our kids trained. But I do understand logistically, we've got to start, and the training is, I think, best, they say groups 10 to 30, but it sounds like 20 is really your ideal number of people to have in the room at a time because it's such an interactive program.
Sure.
And that, you know, cuts it down, right? Because there's how many staff members to begin with.
Sure.
So we're, again, a piece of this is, you know, I like, we empower the adults to act, not to own. There are boundaries. We don't want everybody out there taking on kids' stuff, and that's it. One of the things that I really like about this program is that is reinforced throughout. You are not becoming a counselor, you are not becoming a therapist. The other piece that I put up here that I think is exciting, if you look at this map, again, we reached a million people in the US who are trained, mental health first aiders. Massachusetts has over 11,000 people who are trained and 199, oh, excuse me, 201 instructors. And it's growing. You know, you look at California, it has 85,000 people who are trained in this. So I just, you can see it hits across the US. I think, I was just thrilled to find this program, to be honest with you.
Susan, what do you think? She's a teacher, that's why I'm asking her.
Jody, I just want to say thank you. I mean, when you first approached me earlier this year, I told you how excited I was. I think that, I think it has a lot of potential. I think it's a wonderful approach for us to be taking. And I so appreciate of your leadership in this and helping to support every step of the way. So thank you very much for your work with it. Thank you absolutely.
Any other questions for Jody before she leaves us? Will you come with some good information? Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent's report.
I will be quick tonight.
Especially because I was going to lose your voice.
I just want to speak to the town again as well to say that I was really proud of our staff. I was so proud of that meeting that night. We approached it a little differently. We approached the agenda a little differently. And our staff did such a great job. But what I really appreciated was staying back after for all the snacks. And we have a lovely little buffet that our food services folks have put out there. And that's the first time I've ever seen that, where we all stayed back after and visited. And I just thought that was hugely powerful. So special thanks to everyone who was involved in that. Want to mention that we had our very first town administrators meetings. You know that we did this last year. We did it quite often last year. But then we got to the point where we thought, you know what? We probably only need to do this when we need to do this. And then if we have other things that come up, then we go after that. If it's, again, still comes up, we go back after meeting with that town manager rather than just waiting for the next meeting. We automatically go to, so that there's no timeline of communication. What we've done this year is we set up, sorry, monthly meetings for the three town administrators and myself. We had the first one the other day, and all three towns were represented at that meeting. It was a great meeting. It really was a great meeting. There are times when they go off and they start talking about stuff. Quite frankly, I have no idea what they're talking about. But I learn a lot. And so it's really, really, it was really good. Very rich discussion, very robust. It was excellent. The advisory committee met the other night for their second time, the Nishoba Region High School Advisory Committee. And I think our chairman, Mr. Skatsky, I think did a great job. I think what his intent right now is just to bring a lot of information to the table, to make sure that everybody sitting around that table is, has got access to all the same information. Did a lot of really good work by the task force work. I think he seems to really have such a good handle on so much of the process and is able to bring that nice consistency there. I think it helps because Lynn also said on that. So you see that, and that consistency come forward too. And there's a lot to learn for the newcomers onto our committee. And so there was a lot of information. I think there will be a lot of information to come out of the next meeting as well. But nonetheless, I just want to send out a special thank you to everybody involved in that committee. Really appreciate their time and the commitment. The last thing that I'm going to bring up just tonight is just that we're working on the administrative goal setting process. So I've been meeting with all of our principals, sometimes more than once. Since we're kind of working through, and we do a reflection back on last year, we look at the needs of school, we look at their own professional needs. Sometimes I'm out and about, and I'm also doing this with some of our assistant principals as well, although that's my goal. But that is happening right now because the culture is being established that this is what we talk about, this is how we talk about it. So I've been going around, I only have one other principal left now that I'm going to meet with on a one-to-one to have this type of a discussion. But Kathy, it's basically that five-step cycle. And the very thing that you all do with me is exactly what I'm in the process of doing. Looking at the four standards, just like we do with the teachers. I noticed, you can see it at the back room there. So we're taking the exact same process with our principals and ours of the principals as well. So just to put that on the table. So although it's taking a little bit more meetings than I thought, I think it's very, very valuable, very, very rich conversation. So that's in a nutshell where I've been busiest in the last two weeks.
Any questions? Okay. So we're going to move into the new business portion of our agenda. And Emery Stoika is going to, our manager of human resources, is going to give us an update. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure, thanks. So we continue to work away at some of our final staffing. But she's going to give you kind of a general overview tonight of our staff in general. I'm not sure, I don't think you've got anything, I do. You're just going to talk it through. And I think a little bit of, you know, some of the things that we've, some of the realignments that we did to share, you know, and the tweaking that we've done. I think that we're just kind of sitting back now to see if some of that tweaking has worked or if we have to do some more refinement. And she'll probably touch on that, and I'll probably swoop and make a comment or two on that. So I want to use her name, Emery, and I'll jump in.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to update you on our human resources function. First thing I wanted to talk about was ASOP, our substitute calling system, because the school committee was kind enough to support that last year. When we, when I spoke to you last year, we had just moved away from the subcaller and into the ASOP system. We had just implemented it, we were trying to get familiar with it. Now we've got a year under our belts, so we've got some experience with it. When we compare the ASOP system to the live subcaller, ASOP has got some nice advantages. The advantage for the teachers is that the teachers are able to set for themselves up to five of their top five substitutes. So they can pick up to five people that they would like to have be the people who see their vacancy before any of the other substitutes. So they get an opportunity to accept that assignment before anybody else. So that there's a little bit more consistency in the classroom because they're more likely to get one of the people who's been in their classroom, you know, more than once. That's a good thing. The subs like this system because it's, because of predictability. Instead of, you know, the substitute teacher, the bane of the substitute teacher's getting that call at whatever time, godly hour in the morning and saying, kid, who come in? You know, we can't even find the telephone. This, they can get that if they want, but they can turn off that function and instead just go online and get their assignments that way without being called in the morning. So it's predictable, it's a little bit more respectful, I think, of their time. They can block off if they're going to go to Florida for a couple of days. They can block off that time, you know, I'm not going to be available here. So that's, they like that very much. Our office likes it because it's, it automatically takes care of the Affordable Care Act requirements. It won't let a substitute teacher work more than they can and not have us, have to offer them health insurance. So it will block them off in any given week when they get to the point where it would, over time, hit the requirement for us to offer them health insurance. We do make exceptions if we've got somebody that we know, like a retired teacher, for instance, that we know has got the health insurance. We have the ability on that system to remove that block off so that they can work, they can work as much as they want because we know that they're offset. So that's great because otherwise, we would have to do that. I don't know how we would do that. We'd have to do that by hand. So I think that was a positive change, it's cost-effective. We're really grateful to have it.
How's your fill rate?
Separate issue is, is that what you're going to ask?
No, I was just...
So explain to people, can you explain to people what the fill rate is?
Yes, absolutely.
And what it was?
I can't. Separate and apart from how our subs are called, whether they're called by a live human being or whether they're called with the ASOP system, is the fill rate. Fill rate. And that means how many of our absences, we actually get someone to come in to cover that absence. The school committee took a couple of good steps last year that helps us with that fill rate. One of them was increasing the wages that we pay to our teacher substitutes to $80 for a day. So that we're really a step ahead of a lot of the other towns, so that substitutes are coming to us. The other thing is that we didn't, we didn't increase it for the instructional assistant subs because the thought was that we would want to kind of nudge the substitutes into the teaching assignments. The thought of the committee, I believe, at the time being, if someone is going to not be filled, we would rather have the instructional assistant not be filled than have the teacher not filled. As a result of this, our fill rate this year has increased by 7% over the same period last year. So that would be, because it's kind of early in the year, but we've got all of September, and we've got that first week in October. So we're 7% higher. Each day, we still have between, an average of between four and five positions that are not filled. But that's district-wide, so that, you know, they're not all necessarily, you know, from the same school. And that is notwithstanding the fact that we've got a lot of professional development going on this time of year. So it's not unusual to look on the homepage, you know, that I can see, and see that, you know, one of the elementary schools asked for six additional, six substitutes for teachers that are there, but they're doing professional development. So even with that, we've still got, we've still got that, that only four or five people each year not. Also, the push nudging the people towards the subs has helped with that. Our subteacher slots are filled an 18% higher fill rate than our instructional assistant slots. So that's a good thing. We held our annual subteacher recruitment slash orientation event a few weeks back in the auditorium over there at Farn Sawyer. We were delighted to have eight people come and sign up to be new subs. And then we had an additional five weren't able to come to that, but they walked into our office. I want to recognize with gratitude the work of Alita, and Vicky, and Darcy and the organization of that, when they get them all signed up, they get them their badges and do all that stuff. Nurse Julie Henley from downstairs came over, and she talked to them about life-threatening allergies and their responsibilities in that regard. And then Steve Grant was the star of the show. He made them teachers in 45 minutes. He talked to them about, his pitch was that substitutes are not like, I remember when I was at school, a substitute, you know, they would sit and they would read the newspaper, and we would do whatever we would do. No, not these days. The continuity instruction is something that is our goal. So he talked them about a day in the life of a sub, what happens when you get the call? What happens when you get to the school? What do you do? How to read the lesson plans that are left by the teacher, both at the elementary, the middle, and the high school level? What to do if there are no lesson plans? How to pinch-hit? He recommends that they have in their back pocket a lesson plan, an age-appropriate lesson plan for every age group that they go in, both in case that there don't happen to be lesson plans or in case the timing is off and you end up with looking at the clock and saying, oh my God, I've got them for another 15 minutes. You know, let me take out that extra lesson plan. He talked to them very nicely about classroom management, about how to treat the children with respect and also keep them from hanging from the chandeliers, which I know is, like, what, back of the day?
Yeah.
You know, exactly. Of course, I wasn't, but some of my hard classmates.
I was.
And he gave them practical advice, you know? Buddy up with a teacher next door, find somebody. And he reassured them that the assistant principals and the principals and the other teachers would not leave them to flounder, but would have them come in. He also encouraged the new subs, which is kind of contrary to what we're hoping, but it's a good, it was good advice. Nevertheless, if you're not sure, if you're, you know, scared off by the whole life-threatening allergy thing, the lesson plans, what are we going to do? You know, we have to continue the instruction. He encouraged them to start off as instructional assistant subs. You know, take that the first couple of times and then get your feet wet, and then look around and say, hey, you know what? I can do that. And then with the thinking that they would move into the teacher positions. So, yeah, it's worked. It's worked out well. Not a perfect system, but we're in the continuous improvement, continuous improvement phase. We've got some, a couple of subs, probably less than a handful, who are a little bit resistant. They're still bypassing the ASOP system. Those are typically substitutes who are, they have very limited availability or want to work very specific, you know? I want to be an art substitute on Tuesday when there's a full moon, you know? So they're, they're working outside the system, and the secretaries are very generous in accommodating them. We're trying to bring them into the fold, little by little. Because there are ways to do that on ASOP, so that you only do art on full moons. You know, so that's ASOP. It's a work in progress. It's wonderful.
The only, the only other thing I would add to is that we're able to track and run reports, and we can find information just like this now. That's very, very useful for us, is we monitor this. So that's another real strength. Can I take this?
It is, yeah, a lot of nice reports. Last year, the school committee approved four new custodial positions for us, for which we're very grateful. And the schedule for those four custodians included the weekends. We did that because there are all the weekend events that were taking place in our schools to kind of try to keep the overtime down for that, provide some consistent coverage for those weekend events, and make it so that our regular custodians didn't get burned out and therefore, you know, make themselves sick or get injured, go to bed, or whatever at work from all that additional overtime. Those positions didn't start until January of next year. And really due to the cyclical nature of our business, you really need to have, you really need to compare this time this year with this time last year because, you know, the custodial work, you know, in September is different from the custodial work in June. So we don't have that, we don't have that comparison yet. But I can tell you, I talked to Tommy Rich, and I couldn't shut her up. But I can tell you, I've talked to Tanya Rich and I couldn't shut her up. She was delighted and the fact that there was some weekend help at the high school for her, and she said between the sports, the drama, she said she's not locking and unlocking the doors anymore. When she, when they come in on Monday morning, the gyms are clean and ready to go for the school on Monday morning. She said, you know, so with that kind of information, she's, she's been delighted with the, she said it's much more efficient, it's just better having those sub custodians. Although we don't have what we call SPLY information, same period last year information, I can see looking at the sick leave use, which we can hypothesize would be a function of whether they're getting burned out and, and making themselves sick. So if we take that as a given, let's see, from the, the routine sick leave, from the time that the, after the four new people were hired last year, the sick leave use is twenty percent less than it was in the six months before that. And if we're, if the sick leave use that we've had thus far this year continues along at the same rate, we would be on track for another, a reduction of another twenty-five percent of that. So it looks like that the trend for the sick leave is down, if you follow the hypothesis there. Also, in the custodial arena, our head custodians, who used to be islands unto themselves in their own particular buildings, they've become such a nice cohesive, nice cohesive group. They're a team, you know, they get together regularly, they talk back and forth, they have meetings together, they participated as a group in a performance improvement session to help elevate the, the work that their custodians do, help them, help the custodians to do better in their practice. And we went through together a newly revised custodial employee handbook that's going to help them in that effort. That's the ASOP and that's the custodians.
A couple of comments on the custodians. Some of the feedback I got this year too was that the summer work was just dealt with so much more efficiently this year because we had the extra couple of sets of hands. And they said that they were able to work faster and more efficient, efficiently with that, that support. The principals are telling us that they're finding that their buildings are so much cleaner and so that there's a very dramatic improvement in the level of cleanliness around the buildings. The other thing that our custodians are telling us is that they feel that their level of productivity is substantially higher and that their morale is substantially higher. And the last thing I would say is, you kind of alluded to it quickly, but we have started professional development with our custodians, which I don't know if that's been happening, I don't think it has, but as though we're bringing in different agencies or different parts of our vendors, like a PV components of those vendors to help do a series of things. And Maya sometimes will bring stuff in and we do that, so we involve them on a PV level that I think they haven't had before either. So I just wanted to add that. So we would, we would say right now it's been very, very successful.
Other HR items of note, I mean, Navy people out there on our hail and farewell summer season, we wished a happy retirement to five teachers. Then we brought twenty-three new teachers on board and I'm happy to tell you that every single one of them is licensed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Last year, we had two teachers who ran waivers to start the year. This year, we have none, 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 so that's good. Twenty-one of our teachers obtained professional teacher status this year. That's similar to the old concept of tenure, it's a career milestone and it is a huge big deal. They have to have completed three years at which they were at risk of being non-renewed at the end of any of those three years, and it didn't happen. So they met our high standards and, and they get this, this professional teacher status. So we really, we recognize them on the first day.
For sure.
Because that's a big deal. We're closing in on the end of a, an open enrollment period for life insurance, which we haven't had and, you know, for those who have been here in many of the year, it's, we've had our life insurance representative has gone to each school and sat in the building for a couple, three hours so that people could come. There's a couple of new products that they were able to sign up for, change their beneficiary if they wished, so that, we're, we're almost done with that. Next week, they're going to have a last call here for anyone who, for whatever reason, missed it, so they can come in and talk to the rep about what their options are and make that. We have a wellness program that's offered through our insurer, Meyer. We, last year, offered yoga lattes and total body fitness, both which were very well received and a bump at crack, I mean, they were turning people away for these. We won the multi-district Fitbit challenge. Maya provided, anyone who wanted to participate with a free Fitbit. And we tracked our progress against the other towns. We won. Every day, they posted the ten or twenty-five, whatever it was, highest people, I never made, I never made the cut, nevertheless. So we did better than, we did more steps, our employees, than the, than the participants near Shirley, Blackstone Millville, Dyton Rehoboth and Triton. So we're very excited. And we won a thousand dollar prize, which we're, we're planning on using to, to purchase age-appropriate wellness-related books and give them to the libraries in each of the schools. However many books we can buy for each school, that's the plan there. Recently, although this wasn't last year, but recently, because everybody just had to tell you, Meyer-sponsored goat yoga session.
Goat yoga.
Over in, over here in Bolton.
We have the pictures to prove it.
We have pictures to prove it, yeah. And it was also fully booked and just a lot of fun.
It was great, I went.
Yeah. And just lastly, we're gearing up to help out any of our employees who are going to be impacted by the new desert licensure regulations. Some of them have gone into effect as of July and some of them won't go into effect until 2019, but there's time to help them be prepared for those. And also, we're helping to assist any of our employees, who, teachers and others, who might be able to benefit from the public loan, public service loan forgiveness program. Starting in this month, in October, if you fit the criteria and your loan fits the criteria, in October, you might be able to apply and get your loan forgiven because you've done the public service for the right amount of time. So we're trying to, you know, help anybody who might be even possibly eligible to that, to find out if they are and maybe, you know, maybe get that taken care of, which would be kind of fun.
Just a school loan, Jerry?
School. Yes, yeah, not the mortgage, yeah, no. I like all you think, Lynn, but yes. And that, that's the report from our human resources. Can I stand for questions?
Well, a couple of quick things too, just so that, you know.
You better not get me sick.
Nurse Leader, we've had several really good interviews and are doing some reference checks now. So a lot of process is coming along. The same thing with the Director of Facilities, we've had some really good interviews there as well. And we've got some reference checks with that as well, coming along. So that's, that's a long, a good process. The only other thing that I would say that we wanted to bring up, just HR related, but I, I don't think we're looking for any detailed discussion tonight, was just, it's not lost on us that the position of the Assistant Superintendent is like dormant for the last couple of years. And you'll probably see that come around as we move forward into the new budget year. So I think we just wanted to put that out there, saying we know it's just kind of been laying out there, but you'll probably see us trying to reactivate that in moving forward. But that'll come through more during the budget season and such than tonight. Tonight's just a, this is a position we know that's still out there.
Why don't we re-update? Any, any questions? Any more? Lynn, go on then.
Well, I just wanted, you said five teachers retired and twenty-three new ones are going on.
Are you saying that the math doesn't work?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, of course, retirement isn't the only way people leave us.
Right.
There were teachers who resigned. And we also took on two, the Class Connections and the Early Risers, new positions.
Two SPED programs.
The SPED programs, these needed new teachers. And then the, the two part-time kindergarten programs, two of the, two of the part-time kindergarten programs needed instructors as well. One of them, one of the current kindergarten teachers moved into the part-time. So there is, so between the retirements, the resignations and those new positions, the math works.
So do we have an increase of teachers from last year to this year?
Well, we do, we would have those two, the Class Connections and the.
The two SPED.
The two SPED.
Yeah.
Then we have the two part-time Kindies, so that's four. And then, did we have an additional, I want to say, social worker, I'm not sure. Was there one other? I want to say that there was one other, but it's not.
But for teachers, I was asking for teachers.
Okay.
But the four that we knew about, that we approved.
Right, it's all the ones that you.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, Neil.
Am I just a few clarification questions on the sub process? So when you say that you need to have a lesson plan as a sub, it's recommended, I'm assuming that most of the sub positions are going to be starting from the younger grades filled, they'll be backfilled first before you get to the high school, and then high school would be more likely to have like a study or something? Or do they need to have, where I'm going with this is, do they need to have five different lesson plans in their back pockets depending upon this course-specific placement?
I would, if I was a sub, I'll tell you, because I wouldn't want to go in without one. But the more common occurrence is that the, the teachers have lesson plans ready for their substitutes at each level if they're, if they're absent, or even if just ready for the next day. And, and sometimes, if it's not the case, that morning, the teacher will email or fax the lesson plan to the office and they bring it down to the, to the subteacher, so they've got the lesson plan. That's a, like a, like a Plan B, you know, the, the lesson plan in the back pocket.
The only other question I had was, is the, the subs, are they evaluated at the end of the year?
We don't evaluate our substitutes. The, the principals, of course, you know, keep, keep their eyes open and occasionally the principal will call and say, you know, yeah, not, not so much on this sub. Or, and I think this year, I think we hired as permanent teachers, some people who had been, who had been substitutes. And I know that a couple of our teachers who had been with us for several years started out as, as substitutes. Oftentimes, that's the long-term sub, but yes, that's, see, what, the Commonwealth pumps out a lot more, let's just take elementary, general ed, one through six. A lot of children, a lot of students graduate with that license each year and there are just not that many jobs. Oftentimes, those people will take the substitute jobs, then they get their foot in the door and they, you know, they become known, they get experience, they go someplace else, they become known to the principal and, you know, and sometimes it turns into, to like that.
Yeah, Mary, I think ASOP, the function of ASOP allows the teacher to give feedback about some, I don't know how they take advantage of it.
Yeah, I, I don't know either. And it also leaves, lets the sub leave feedback for the teacher. So that there's some, an opportunity for communication back and forth.
I, I know it sounds crazy, but I was just wondering if there's, there's feedback from the student's perspective on the sub.
I think that that would vary by the level.
Having kids in the district, I mean, I've had some pretty interesting stories over the years, you know, of some, some colorful scenarios that I'm not sure have made it necessarily to people that should hear about.
Yeah.
So I, but I know that's kind of silly, maybe, having the kids do it, but.
Well, it's, it's probably not silly, but I think it's a more of an informal, you know, I think that, that the students would come forward at that point. I don't think that there's anything, and I could be wrong about it, but I don't think there's anything formal in place for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My way, my way.
Um, we're going to move quickly to policy, AAA, school committee bylaws. And Susan, I'm going to turn it over to you. I'm assuming that everybody's read through it. I have a bunch of questions. So does anybody have questions on this policy?
It was revised last year?
It was. But I think with the, the concerted focus on all of the policies and our, we're not distracted this year, I think it's a good time for us to review again. I'm just going to throw out a couple of things unless someone else has anything that they noticed. And on the first page, section three, article two, section three, article two, section five. So I noticed that the school committee shall elect, select and terminate superintendent, which we know, in section, that's in section two. In section three, the school committee may award a contract to a business administrator. In section four, the school committee shall appoint one or more school physicians and registered nurses. In section five, the school committee may establish the, and appoint positions of assistant or associate superintendents. And section six, the school committee shall appoint an administrator of special education. And my issue with the back and forths is the budget is our, one of our main and most important requirements. If we shall appoint a school physician, why should we not shall appoint a business manager? Now, that would be under the recommendation from the superintendent.
I think the shall is, it's the school committee's authority to appoint rather than the superintendents. The superintendent brings it to the school committee, the school committee says yes or no, that's the shall.
Is it not just based off Mass General Law?
Yeah.
That's just the same language that Mass General Law has, that's all.
So, all right.
So it's just about who has the authority? That's, that's what the shall is about.
No, no, I understand that. It just seems strange to me that we, oh, you're saying for both three and five. No, 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 I know, you're saying for both three and five.
I'm not sure what your question is.
I guess, I guess my point is, as a school committee member, I want, and present company excluded, I want the appointment for a business manager and I want the appointment for a, an assistant superintendent, if there is one, to come before the school committee, for the school committee to approve.
I see.
Versus.
You wanted to say, if there is such a position, then the school committee shall.
Yeah, I do. But I need to know what you guys think. And Brooke's sitting there with a tear in her headlight. But, but again, let's go back to what's our responsibility, hiring the superintendent, you know, approving the budget and the policies. So we're not going to do it tonight, I think you guys need to think about it. I, I'm saying, we, we're, so we got the may and the shalls.
I think the may and the shall is that the statute was written recognizing that some districts don't even have a position. But if they choose to have a position, then they may appoint such persons.
But I don't think that the, I don't, I think that the responsibility, the onus should be on the school committee. Thoughts? Kathy?
Would it make sense to check with Dorothy and see what her take is?
This actually went around on the MAC email list in the last month, someone was asking, what's our authority? And these are all listed as, as in the authority of the school committee to.
Right.
Approve contracts.
And if it is the authority of the school committee by writing the may, you take it away from the school committee.
Well, you're just not holding the school committee accountable, and I think we need to be held accountable. Right? Yeah. So, I mean, you could find out from Dorothy and then come back.
It's, I mean, so I see this as a very fine line, right? Because I think one of my aha moments is, is the whole administration versus school committee division, right? And, and it's, Brooke, right now, is the superintendent. It's, it's her organization to put together, to lead and to succeed or fail based on her experience and her knowledge. And that means she needs to have the leeway to create the organization as she sees fit.
Right, this wouldn't take that away.
If we create the organization, right, that's the fine line I'm talking about. If we dictate in certain terms that are unclear, it then turns into this.
I don't think that's what this is, though. I, I think what this is, is the superintendent would still be the one to go out, do the work, find the person that she would like and bring it to the school committee, but that, but that the school committee needs to approve. Let's hearken back to two years ago.
I was just thinking that.
Right, so where I'm going with this is, add the, something to the language of, at the superintendent's request, the position shall be approved, but it's really up to the superintendent to do the hiring of that individual. So you, budgetarily, would come to us and say, hey, I've got a position that I'd like to put in there, and you approve that position because it's going to have budgetary implications. And we say, yeah, we approved the position, and now it's up to her to actually do the hiring to fill that position.
Okay, we're going to.
Well, I mean, the, section, sorry, this is too, section five is, it's, that's verbatim from MGL.
Right.
So I, I don't know, I'll ask Dorothy, but I suspect that, that, I don't know how that we can play with that language, unless we add to it another sentence or two that, that clarifies it, that's just specific to Nishova. But I think that that language needs to be in there because.
That's my first reaction to it too.
I mean, I have section five here, section, section forty-one is a little lengthier, Section, section forty-one is a little lengthier, so I had trouble finding that specific spot of it.
So can you ask her, Kathy, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I think the issue is, has to do with the contract and the policies that give the school committee the authority to approve the creation of positions and the job descriptions, and also to set the salary level. There is, we had a training with Dorothy, one of the things we talked about were contracts, especially non-union contracts, where the school committee has a say in what goes into those contracts. And anything that is extraordinary should be approved by the school committee. And I think when Lorraine was referring to a couple of years ago, there were some issues around that. And I, I think that, and I don't know how we frame it, or how it goes into bylaws, or where, where to put it, but I feel strongly that the school committee, the non-union positions, needs to be able to prove what is in these contracts, given some of the, the things that were put in previous contracts. So I don't know if that's in our bylaws, or it's in policy, but, I mean, for me, that's the concern.
Okay. So I think, if you could find out from Dorothy, hearing what you're saying, I just feel strongly that business manager is the one who is creating the budget. And the school committee owns that budget as soon as we adopt it. So there should be, if, if it's perfunctory, that's fine, but there should be, I mean, an approval process where, and I know what Mass General Law says, I say, you guys, you school committee people, you need to make sure that you approve these people, but I just don't know that the language in here is consistent with what I've seen. So if we could find out from Dorothy. And the same thing with the assistant superintendent. The assistant superintendent is the guy or gal in the absence of the superintendent. So why would we, as a school committee, or why would any, forget about the people on the, in the seats right now, but why would any school committee, you know, know that their responsibility is hiring the superintendent, but not the assistant superintendent? We went down this road in a very ugly way two years ago, so let's not recreate that wheel. So I don't know that we need to have much more...
Yeah, I don't see this re, I'm not arguing something different from what you're saying, or taking a different point. What I'm seeing is, the position itself, I get that, that the salary range, right? So Brooke might come and say, hey, we're looking to add this thing to the budget, sort of like what had happened before at the high school.
We're not selecting the person.
Right, but that's exactly right. So the individual, that's up to Brooke to hire the individual.
Yeah, but that goes without saying.
The contract, I agree with the contract, so that there aren't any, it has nothing to do with you, but the, the past experience that we had, where there's some very interesting, non-typical flavors that burned the district, as you know very well, to, to the tune of quite a lot of money. And I don't think anyone that's, that's been involved with that ever wants to come near that. So there is that fine line that we have to draw, that, that we can still have that, we can respect the towns and what we're doing on the budget, but still respect the job that you're doing, right?
So, yeah, and, um...
I'm just wanting, from what Kathy said, are we talking about, Kathy, can I be on the, can I give you the renewal? Because we, every time a renewal happens, it's...
That's a new contract.
That's a new contract, yes.
So is that defined?
It is in law, in, in Mass General Law, it is defined, but it was not visible to us in, in previous years. Now, the other thing about the contract is that anything, any perk, if you will, aside from salary, that has budget impact, and most of them did, would have to have school committee approval because of the impact of the budget. But again, not visible to us.
Well, I, I think that that's what we need to know, is I think by, you know, what Kathy's saying, what Neil's saying, what Brooke's saying, what I'm saying is, we, we just kind of need to get that clarified. And we do set the salary ranges, and then Brooke does what she needs to do within those.
Pardon?
And, and, and any extras, which there are very few now. So, so Susan, if you could do that, and we'll put that on the next agenda, if that makes sense for everybody? Because that's the one piece on here that I was concerned about.
I, there are just a couple of, oh, that type of graphical things that I'll go through and delete, and I can take a look at that, just re, just a little bit of rearranging on some things, to bring some better consistency to it. And then also on page four of fifteen, under clerk, section number two A, it says preparing, filing, and binding. We don't do that anymore, so we would just, okay, just to clean up verbiage, I'll just always keep it verbiaged.
Oh, so if you guys, yeah, get that to Alita, so she can get that to Susan to mark up the...
Yeah.
Because you're right, it's all electronic now.
You know what you wanted to say.
It's all posted.
Yeah, we don't bind books.
No, I... What'd you say?
We don't bind books anymore.
No, we don't. We don't waste that money. Okay. Anything else on, just Kathy?
Yeah, there was something, I'm sorry. No, there was, I can't find it now. It has something to do, oh, yeah, with the relationship with the superintendent and staff. So the school committee, in section one, shall consult whenever possible with the superintendent's business manager, et cetera. That's school committee as a whole, through the chair.
I just want to... What section is it?
This is article twenty-three, section one, it is page twelve of thirteen. And then, so sections one and two, just for clarity's sake, and, and this has come up in the manual as well, in terms of communication with superintendent and house committee, just to be clear, that requests for public information from the superintendent or her staff, his staff, shall be made by and through the chairperson of the school committee. And then it says, or said subcommittee. I would like to see it just...
Yeah, I saw that.
Just say, made through the chair of the school committee. And my assumption would be that the chair of the subcommittee would work through the chair to get the information, but I just think that needs to be clarified there.
So eliminate or sets up.
I would just put period, and I think that's what we did in the manual, yes.
I had, are you...
And I'll just say, I don't necessarily agree with that point of view. I may be the lone person on that, but you end up slowing your organization down when you have to hop through lots of people.
The only person you have to hop through is the chair.
How slow is that?
It all depends.
On the chair. What do you agree on?
So I just had a couple of quick, in article three, section six...
Page Susan.
Um, sorry, two of thirteen.
Okay.
Um, I wondered if that was in this, I guess I could have looked, sorry, in the, in the school committee manual, or if that would be, it says new members shall be given access, are they given access to the policies, the every plum law, to the regional agreement on leases?
That'll be in the...
Project, that'll, all of that will be...
Everything is in the packet or online.
Yeah, okay, cool. And then, then on page five of thirteen...
Yeah.
Article eight, section one, says that the school committee shall hold its annual organizational meeting within ten days of the annual town elections.
Yes, yes, we do do that.
We do do that this, okay. So that wasn't what we did in the fall.
In the spring.
Oh, we did it in the spring, were the subcommittees, oh, yeah, we were, okay, gotcha. So that's the ten days, all right, checked. And then, sorry.
It's the school committee, not the subcommittees.
Yep, and then, oh, you had a question about emergency meetings?
Where is that?
That's section three, article nine, section three. You had sent something about...
My gosh, now I gotta try to remember, except...
Except in an emergency notice of every meeting of school committee shall be posted on the district website at least forty-eight hours.
I don't think it's any longer.
No, it, there isn't. I think you read it some differently.
Maybe it was the previous version, because there was a different, wasn't that...
No, I think it was this one, but you, you were worried about executive sessions.
Oh.
And, and it's fine. If it's an emergency, then it's just as soon as reasonably possible is what it says.
Right. Okay.
And then, oh, the, so this, this, article eleven, I, I just had starred because, in order for us to approve the amendment to the bylaws, it, just, just so we know about the timeline.
I underline that.
We have to, I have to, like, make the changes to this, then bring them to you, then we have to agree the following time, so it's like three separate meetings. So I'll try and get the answer from Dorothy and do all of the changes that are suggested tonight, once I get the email from Alita, so that the next time, we can say, yes, this is the version we want to vote on the next time.
All right, so, so for the next meeting, then, we're going to have to add an agenda item on the review.
Just review the changes and then decide whether we want to vote on the amendment, amend amendments for the following meeting, or a future meeting. Does that make sense?
Yep. And Neil, you have a question?
Yeah, article six, section one. So the treasurer shall be a member of the school committee. That goes pre-receivership, that, that statement, unless it's MGL.
It's the statute.
Yeah.
But then it also says unless the treasurer's, unless...
Right, so my recommendation would be that we appoint a manager, like, strike the school committee portion, but I don't, I didn't know if that was MGL.
I don't know that we can.
That's what I mean. I don't think it was MGL.
There's no MGL reference there, so...
No, there isn't, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, it is the statute. It could be a school committee member, but we choose never to do that.
Right.
And that's actually what the bylaw says.
We do, we do appoint, right? Yeah.
I would do.
So it says we could do, or you're saying we shouldn't give the...
I was just, I was just saying, if we could, just to strike that it shall be a school committee member, because...
Unless the school committee should choose.
And just having the schools, committee shall choose either a business manager or hire a treasurer.
That was one that, that we did discuss. Dorothy had, had, had mentioned that, because she was worried that we hadn't appointed anyone as treasurer. But we do. She was just concerned, she wanted to make sure that was correct.
But we don't formally appoint, so that is a concern, too. So it's either, we're going to find out if it's a regulatory thing, and if not, maybe the treasurer may be, or, because I don't want to take away control from, from future school committees that may feel strongly that they want to do that. I mean, but I guess that's another one, what?
Okay.
Well, I don't, I, I, I don't want to, I...
That, yeah, that, okay.
It's really up to, find out from Dorothy and make, see what she comes back with, and then Neil, we can see what she's, you know, what's the matter, you don't like that.
No, I don't. I think that's Arnold the Pig in Hooterville, I mean, if you're going to have...
As what? What did you just say?
It's Arnold the Pig in Hooterville.
Greenacre reference, but, I mean, it's, it's a little backwards to, to be having school committee member, you know, paying the bills, handling the accounts and so forth.
Oh, I don't think so either, but that's...
I just don't like the, the potential check and balance that that takes away, but that, that's okay. That's just me.
So you're saying we don't formally appoint the business manager as...
We don't, this says...
No, we appoint somebody else as the treasurer and the business manager.
But we don't actively appoint someone.
But we do as a district, and we have an appointment, Vicki, chart here, right? That, if she is the appointed treasurer of the school district.
Right, so each year, according to this, as I see it, we should be reappointing her, just as an official...
I think that's basically what it is.
Well, when, when we review her contract, in, in her contract, which is a yearly, which is a yearly renewal?
It's a stipended position, am I right?
No.
That's her job.
So should I ask if it should be done annually?
Well, just ask her to give us some direction.
Yeah, I think that's all we're...
So, so we'll, we'll do whatever she tells us to do?
No, we have to, we'll, we'll, we'll take it under advisement, discuss it, and then make a decision, I think.
Okay.
But that was one of the ones I had to start by, so overbrought, that was Neil, right?
So the statute says, shall appoint a secretary and a treasurer who may, or need not be a member of the committee.
Because we, as a subcommittee, had discussed it with Brooke already, you might have thought we were all stuck, but, okay.
So what would be helpful is, with all these questions that we have, if you could bring some suggested language...
Yes.
Forward, and then we can...
Yeah, can I just, there was just, I mean, I, just one more thing.
Go ahead.
It was your, your suggestion.
Hooterville.
What do you call it?
Hooterville.
Who, that just doesn't sound right.
I'm just so...
Okay, but it was just like...
Hooterville is a different world for me, but go ahead. You had suggested adding on page six of article, page six, article twelve, adding section four underneath section three, which talks about the annual audit of the district finances, adding the forensic audit there.
Oh, yes! Thank you, guys, do you, okay.
Instead of creating a policy that states every three to five years, if we put it in the bylaws as section four, a forensic audit of the district's finances shall be performed every three to five years. Is that...
I'm okay with it being in the policies.
Policy, not bylaws.
I, well, I, yeah.
I think it belongs in the policies.
Yeah, I'm okay with it being in the policies, too.
So you don't want that added?
Yeah, I think it's fine in the policies.
Yeah.
I mean, we have an audit section in the policies, and it should really be worked into that.
Right, right. I'm good with that. Thank you, Susan.
No, okay. And then, I'm sorry, one...
I guess Susan getting it all, no?
Yeah. Oh, I just thought this was kind of funny.
Oh, better not be mine, than bringing up for this.
There was two questions that I had, and it could just be maybe because I'm a newer member, but, this, page nine, article nineteen, section one, where it says, we shall not conduct no new, oh, new business, okay, after three hours from the start of the meeting.
Oh, right, and then, and I know, it's funky because in section three, it's like, but if they don't notice it, it's okay. It's so silly, yeah.
And then, I don't know, I don't know if this needs to be changed, because I don't know of how many advisory committees have been composed of, more than, on page eleven, article twenty-one, section one, says advisory committees are made up entirely or largely of non-school committee members.
Yeah, I like that one.
But is that common, that's, okay, great. I just didn't know that's something that we're, okay.
But certainly possible, we could have an advisory committee with just one citizen, so, I mean, maybe in a cabin, which we just want one or two citizens, and we have two school committee members. We may not want to be limited in that way.
Largely is a pretty, it's pretty broad, I would say.
Mainly, an advisory committee has a citizen, and subcommittee has only school committee members. That's the real distinction.
Right.
And, I don't know, do we really need to limit it, so largely?
I just didn't know if that's happening.
I think the intent, and this may be another question for Dorothy, but I think the intent of this is to bring the community into the work of the school committee, but I'm not, I, I don't know how the rest of you feel. I don't have a problem with it. Mark is...
I'm fine with the community members, I just didn't know if we ever, if we ever got closer to half and half, like, completely, okay, all right. I just didn't know.
But, but, no, audit advisory.
I'm a minority. We have three citizens, a school committee member, so that follows, actually.
Yeah. And so does the advisory right now for the high school.
Okay, that's it.
We got through that. That was a surprise. I'm so thrilled, other people are reading the bylaws. Well, there you go. Would you like to see the notes? All right, moving on. Budget timeline, Kat, Maroni, our business manager.
Slash, slash treasurer.
Slash what?
Slash treasurer.
No, she's not, she's not.
No, she's not.
Yeah. That would be a conflict.
So I bring before you the fiscal year nineteen, the Shova budget timeline. We started this process already in August, just before our retreat, and this is what I would bring to you, and if you have any questions.
Can we just give a quick broad overview, like, of each month?
Sure.
Just snapshot.
Okay, so basically, this week, we're looking for, what I did first was, I sent out information on expenditures for last year, so that they could see what happened, what they can do better, when they're building their new budget. This week, we have some staffing requests from all the schools and departments due. And we're starting to build the documents now, you know, as, as far as, once we start getting in this data, we're going to start building the documents. For November, we're looking for the site-based, non-salary budgets, the, from teaching and learning, all the schools, food services, extended day athletics, and capital requests for all sites. In December, we're looking for technology, technology capital needs, facilities, capital plan for the high school completed, and drafts to the towns for their capital. So at that point, we should have something ready, so we can present to them, you know, what our needs are.
So, so there's a little bit of a, you've got to correct me here, because on, on this calendar, we have the capital plan update in November, which works for us and for the we have the capital plan update in November, which works for us and for the towns, but then in December, you've got the capital plan for the high school, which means we're, that's going to miss the capital, although in November, it says capital requests all sites, so I'm. So I'm, I'm compiling the information, these are the deadlines that I've put out to all the different departments. They need to start to bring this information to me by these dates. In December, I will have all of this information compiled.
But, but I think what Diane's talking about is the, the timeline that she set for school committee.
With you.
She has a calendar, yeah. She has a calendar, and, and to be honest with you, everything aligns, except this one thing.
Oh, that's what we're saying. Right, so we have to resolve that.
So we'll have to resolve that, because everything else is going to be brought up, like the, the food services and all that other stuff is going to be brought forward in a timely fashion. This capital, I think, was the only one that's kind of.
All right, and I'm going to throw this out here before we get into a spiral on it, but I noticed in December that we've got a technology budget, and a technology capital and needs, and we've got a technology committee, if it hasn't met, it needs to meet, you've got people on the school committee who are chomping at the bit. I would hope that that technology committee would somehow get some discussion on what the vision is, what the work is for the year, before a budget comes forward to the school committee for technology. Is that where you guys were going?
Uh, well, that was one of the places I was going.
I can, I can just quickly check around that.
Yeah, and that's not, that's not like, yeah, the question I have is like, what you're reporting there, Pat, thank you for doing this, it's refreshing, I think, actually. It is. When you have December, technology budget and so forth, is that the time that you're doing the report? Is this that we're going to take, is this your internal steps, or is this when we are going to see as far as the technology budget, you know what I mean? So, things as they're being sort of reported out to us, rather, you know, sort of working the way down through as, as the sausage is being made.
Yeah.
Is December, you know, so December 15th, is that when everything's ready for us to actually take a look and say, okay, well, technology budget is, is proposed to be this, capital planning is proposed to be this, or is that the time that you're receiving it from all the different departments, and then you're compiling it, and that information will be ready at a later date?
Well, my thought was that this was our internal, this, this information would be all prepared, ready for the superintendent to review, and then we would then pick a date to present it to you.
Okay, so that, to me, on the school committee, that's the more important thing, is, is when are we going to actually be seeing that? Not necessarily where.
And I think when we had talked about the earlier dates, like food services and that kind of thing, you know, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, the notion is that those folks would come and kind of report, oh, okay, here's where we were at last year, this is what we're looking at, this is our vision for this year, but without specific numbers, but if there was another major thing that, that somebody needed, which quite frankly, I don't know that I see that right now, but, you know, for, for food services, for example, they could generate reports, so you can take a look at that, it's like, so that's what would come to you folks in that, that whenever they're coming up next, I can, I'm not sure when it is.
They're coming up next, next meeting.
Next meeting. So they would speak to you about that kind of thing, but their actual budget piece wouldn't be ready until, probably mid-December, so that you would have it.
So, and that brings up a good point, because here we have January 15th for the full budget, but in December, on December 6th, we're slated to see the preliminary full budget.
I know that we have that here, I don't know if we can hit that date or not, I don't know, we might be able to.
So, yeah.
So we just need to align the internal with the actual reporting of the school.
I think what we were trying to avoid this year was getting the budget at the end of January again.
Right.
And I think that's, well, I had put December 6th there, sister, so, I mean, we've got to get a little bit, if there's any way to get a little bit closer to that early December timeframe, because again, we don't, you know, there's so much good work being done now, and I know that you're going to be bringing people forward to share kind of where they are, similar to what Anne Marie did today, you know, what's happened, you know, what are some of the issues, and what are some of the upcoming things that you see are going to be happening for FY19, but I, I think if there's a, a way to get that budget to us before January 1, it would be very valuable, not just to the school committee, but to the community.
Now, are you thinking too, just for clarification purposes, are you thinking that we would have our first, like, because I thought that you probably would want to take the similar process to what we did last year, like that Saturday date, right, and go, did you want to take that same process?
All I know is when you and I sat down, it was early January, that was the date that was given, so I don't care at this point if it's a Saturday or not, I'm just looking, I mean, we could, we can figure out what that actual day is at that, you know, when we have time to do that. All I'm saying is, rather than waiting till mid, end of January, is there a way to get us this budget earlier, so that we have time to go through it and spend.
I don't think we're looking end of January this year, that, that's not where we were at all, that's like, it's got the January 15th type thing, but.
Okay, it's two weeks, but.
Yeah, so, but nonetheless, it doesn't matter, I still want to know though, is that the process that you want to take? Because that does make a difference for us, a god, a Saturday to sit down.
Well, we haven't even talked about that, I mean, we could dovetail into that, you want to do another, you do, for the rollout, presentation of the budget, do you want to do another Saturday meeting?
I think that we have, my opinion is, we have to have a dedicated block of time for it, and I don't mind doing a Saturday meeting for that, you know, so when you're.
How do you folks feel? You good with that, Mark?
Just let's be nervous, just shipping out electronically to you without any.
No, 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 I mean, that's all, that's, but that's all kind of, you know, not to be disrespectful, the minutia of it, I just want to get us to a point where we're like, when are we going to get it, and then we can get into how is it going to be received, and, and the details of the logistics of it.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, for our planning purposes, we kind of need to know.
Okay, so you guys want to do it on a Saturday?
Yeah, I, I'm, personally, I'm fine on a Saturday, I thought the workshop was very good, I, I really appreciate it, because it gave the opportunity for each stakeholder to make their presentation, and then for us to actually ask some pertinent questions about that, and then have this, this dialogue, and I thought that was, that was healthy.
Yeah, that's good. So if everybody's in agreement, then Saturday is fine, but again, I, just, there's a, there's a disconnect, I just want to resolve the disconnect from January 15th, early Janu, or early December, that's, we need to resolve that.
And switching gears, December 15th is when she's going to be getting the capital plan to the high school, but we're supposed to do a go-no-go for December 6th, so I would think we would need that earlier, because that might play in.
Oh, because, oh.
It's a go-no-go, yes or no.
Actually, that's a point.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I, I did think about that, actually, and I am planning to go with as if no, only because I don't want to be caught without the information that I need to move forward, if that in fact does happen.
Are we still needing information?
It's going to be a process, we'll have to figure it out as we get closer to understanding the recommendations.
Well, fill me in, how does that have to do with anything? I mean, and I'm not being sarcastic.
No, it's fine, the, with the SOI, and we have to keep in mind that even though, there are certain capital projects that we just can't avoid, so whether we put the SOI in or not, it's going to happen. So, without, without the information, knowing what capital projects they're planning on doing, that are coming up, it's a little hard to move from one direction to the next.
So it could be a placeholder.
Yeah.
That may or may not be necessary. What's the matter, Steve, you're saying no?
No, I'm, I'm just thinking that the decision on the, on to go forward with the SOI, first of all, we're looking at a, at two significantly different timeframes. The capital expenses for the high school would be more current in the next year, included in the next budget. The yes or no for the SOI, which is really only step one for, you know, anything we do in the future, is really talking about a longer time period moving out, and therefore, I'm not necessarily sure that the capital expenses for the high school for the next year, or even two years, are apropos, or really have a whole lot of relevance in the decision of look, of look, of looking into, you know, the SOI.
Well, I guess wastewater treatment plant is an example. I mean, we've got the wastewater treatment plant, so if it's a no-go.
Well, the septic system.
The septic, yeah, septic. If it's a no-go, then, yeah, you definitely have to do that, and it's a rush job, but if it's a go, that will get worked into the feasibility study and the work that's happening with the school, so why spend all that money if it's going to be worked into a new project?
That's, that's an unknown, because the part of what I know Jeff was looking into was to see if the, the DER, or DEP, whoever, whichever organization would allow the reuse of whatever we do, in other words, a new building to be hooked up to that, and then the old building disconnected, if there was a new building, or whatever there was done.
Oh my God, what are we talking about?
No, 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 we're, she's talking about the septic, so if you have to put all this money in the septic, and it can't go out for multiple years, the, it, again, where Steve is, it has no bearing, I think, on.
But the site is so restricted, I mean, we don't have a heck of a lot of space.
Right, but that's not part of this conversation.
Okay, but now, so let's go back to what are we talking about here, guys? So what are we talking about? So let's get back on track, because I hear what you're saying, but I think what Pat said is that she's going to be looking at some of those ranges too. Yeah, we just have to kind of make sure that things that don't need to be hard-wired into that budget, that don't happen, don't stay in that budget, and are officially inflated.
Right.
That's the only thing, not, and I'm not questioning you, I'm just saying, we all need to be kind of cognizant of, what are you shoving in there as placeholders and? Right, I mean, it wouldn't be realistic if, if we know that the project is going to go forward and to put a five-year plan out on that building. But we won't know, right? I mean, with the timing of all this, that's the issue, is we won't know.
So you have to assume, you have to assume where Pat's going, that it's a no answer, and that you have to move forward based on that.
Right.
But it would be beneficial for the group to know that there are some things that.
There would be a capital plan, a five-year capital plan, so would be spelled out.
We're not going to see it until after the 6th, the go-no-go is the 6th.
Well, we have a five-year capital plan for next year.
Okay, we're gonna, Pat, you're going to work it into the, the budget and asterisks for us, or whatever you're going to do, so that we know that those are items that we need to be aware of, and we'll have to talk about it when we get there.
So I have a question on the town buildings for capital plan, maybe it's just the way it happened to be phrased in your calendar, where you, it says you're going out to the towns, and I wonder if you met, they'll see stuff before the school committee does, or you'd be asking towns, or just wondering what you intend.
I think that that just happens regularly all the time, you know, like that. That happens regularly all the time anyway, right now, with our admin, with the three town administrators meeting together, right? So I think that that's just kind of saying, this is ongoing, you know, whether it's, oh, if there's something on the radar, yeah, the radar, like the facility, the heating system.
So here's the reason why I ask, for the last several years, I've been asked by my finance committee, what's going to happen, what's going to be posed to us for fixing our own buildings, and I say, I don't know, I haven't seen it, and I have never seen it until March or April, and I prefer to not be in that position, so that we don't know what's being talked to about at town level, just so that we're informed just as well as the administrators are about what's likely to come.
We've got a capital plan update scheduled for early November.
Well, and actually, you know, Pat and I were talking about the capital plan even today, and saying that that has to be a priority for us to pull together, and to be honest with you, it's not like you've got a hundred different projects.
No, it's like three per town, or something.
Is it, is it capital per town? You're absolutely right.
Right, and part of the process is, I meet with them, we discuss, you know, what the project is, and whether or not they think that it's appropriate to move forward with it, before I even put it on again.
Right, my sensitivity is actually from, it's administration, wouldn't tell anybody anything, so I'm just, just trying to figure out ways.
Okay, and I'm going to interrupt you guys for one second, because again, I'm confused as to why the capital plan update is in November, and now we're talking about it at another point, I mean, maybe there's something.
So can we just sync this and then revisit the timeline?
Wait a second, yeah, so.
Are you talking about the last?
This calendar needs to reflect what we talked about. This calendar needs to dovetail with this.
Yeah.
This hasn't been vetted, so I think you guys need to.
Go back and do a quick revisit on a couple of those items.
Because if any of the dates on this need to change, then we need to be made aware of that, we need to talk about it, and now our town officials need to know, because they have received this.
Yeah.
And I'm hesitant to move some things around on here, based on the agreements that we've already had, unless there's a real good reason to do it.
I get that, totally.
Yeah.
Go back and just revisit on one or two of those items.
Are we good? Well, we will be. Okay. Pat, thank you. You're like, what?
Hope it's not fun.
Yeah.
Get the microphone away from us.
For, for old business, Hal, I did these fun breakdowns, I'm going to pass this on to you.
Okay, so at the last meeting, Kathy, you had questioned why the, the balance in the athletic revolving fund at Hale School had grown to this number of forty-seven thousand, and what I did was, if you pull up the sheet, I don't, do you have it up there? Um, you can see that over the years, it started to grow. Initially, I have detailed back to 2005, you can see that there was spending every year out of the revolving account, and then you get up to about 2009, and we didn't spend anything out of that revolving account. Then the following fiscal year 10, we only spent eighteen hundred dollars, we had nine thousand dollars in revenue. So basically, what was having, happening there is, we were spending money when we needed to on appropriate items, they were uniforms, or cost-specific to the programs that we're running, but not the actual salaries of the officials or the coaches for the program.
Should we have been?
We should have been.
Yes.
Okay.
Because, I mean, revolving funds should reflect the expenditures and the revenues, just like all of the other revolving funds that we have in the district. So starting in fiscal year 17, and actually, I did a little bit of it in 16, but in 17, I looked at everything, pulled out all the officials and everything as they have related to each one of the three middle schools, and I started to spend that down appropriately. And as you can see, the expenditures exceeded the revenues that came in for that year.
So in, in FY09.
Yeah.
They didn't spend any money from this account to pay for any of that stuff?
Came from the high school.
I'm sorry?
Came, we, we hashed this out a year and a half ago, this came from the high school.
Okay.
So the high school was footing.
Footing the bill.
The bill, basically, for the grammar schools, and the money was being held, there's two schools which had a balance. Lawrence Sawyer also has, I think, a fairly, or had a fairly healthy balance also, and it was the same thing.
Yeah, and I think by, a couple of things, that this is money that parents pay for their kids to participate, and I, I realize that it also helps out when there are families that cannot afford it.
Right.
But these are, and I think everybody would agree, extraordinary amounts to have in origin. The other thing that is my confusion is that we have a policy about, related to student activity accounts, which are different than the user fees.
Right, they're, they're very different.
Okay, um, and there are, our policy with regard to student activity accounts was last revised in, um, 2004, and MAS C has an updated policy from 2016. I mean, is there a relationship between the user fees and these accounts, or not at all?
No, two separate.
That's very confusing for me.
The student activity funds that you're talking about in that policy, those funds are for activities that happen outside the school bed usually.
Yeah.
It's money collected from students, for, for the students, the money does not belong to the district, we're only custodians of the funds.
Yes, yes. And the student activity accounts are.
Their money, so it's the student's money, or the particular organization, so if you have a robotics club that has eighteen hundred dollars, it's their money. If you have a graduating class of this, again, this is where we run into, we had a lot of the graduating classes, the money was taken from the class, the class members were not notified, and it was rolled into the district, and it was spent without the class knowing, and that's actually something that Hudson had a little bit of heat about, well.
So I guess what I'd like to see us do is to bring our policy with regards to an activity accounts up to date, because they're very different, and I think I sent you both policies, have you looked at those?
Yes, we looked at section J. We're, we're.
Yes, we looked at section J. We're, yeah, we're a lot further ahead in the revision process than, because it's just, we could meet every two weeks on a section of the main.
Oh, I know, and I'm not, this is a criticism.
No, no, I can specifically tell you what Dorothy's recommended changes were, whether or not we agreed as a subcommittee to bring those changes.
Okay, but when we get to it, that's, that's fine.
Well, okay. So are you proposing to bring it sooner? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the section J, that's section J, that was the second section after the section D, which is the one I think we wanna tackle next. That was the next one, the longest section.
Sure.
But that, that is in there and that was the reason why we went in that order.
Sure. And then the other, I don't think we have a policy about user fees.
I'm not aware of any policy regarding user fees.
Does MAS-C have one?
Yes, there, yeah.
So we're gonna get one.
I haven't seen that one. Okay, no, I didn't.
We're gonna get one.
When I looked up user fee, but anyway, no, it just has to get straightened out because people pay this money for their kids to do something and it just, the optics are not...
So today in Budget and Warrant, formerly known as the Finance Subcommittee, we discussed those very things and we have, based on both the forensic audit, MASBO and the CAP. And those two things that you just discussed are a couple of policy amendments or, and/or additions that we are sending over to
Oh, good.
Policy for recommendations, which I'll discuss during the...
We'll meet, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll meet.
I wanna, I think Pat...
Across the table, right? We're gonna meet about those?
I'm gonna send a list that will be, it's a public list.
No, right.
You may wanna attend, somebody needs to attend.
We are, we're gonna set up, we're gonna set up a dual meeting which may actually count as a school committee meeting if there's a forum between the two.
I wanna thank Pat for bringing this out into the sunshine for us.
Totally, absolutely.
Really, really important. I mean, I know a couple of people on the school committee have been commenting about this for a couple of years. And, and so thank you for bringing it forward.
I do have a question with the, with both Hale and Florence Sawyer. They have, how do we reconcile the sums? They've got huge sums, that's stuff that can drive them for years. And I'm just thinking, those came from the parents of those particular students in the school to pay those user fees. Do either of those schools have, maybe that's not the way you would handle it, it's really an administration thing, but I'm just thinking aloud, do they have like projects that they're looking, don't have the funds for, that might relate to the user fees? I know, I think it was Hale or maybe it was Center or some, somebody was looking for an outdoor, the revitalization of an outdoor center that was there. It was gonna cost five thousand dollars to do or whatever, and we had shot that down at that time. But would the principal have the prerogative of being able to use those things to do that or how would that work?
But it's actually used as a...
But, but, but you know what, so...
With their user fees, so I don't know if it is.
Yeah, but so, but see, then there's this whole other side of this which is, so where did the money come from to where?
That's right.
Where did, okay, but just let me finish the thought. There's people that have less knowledge than I do, which is really scary. But, so, so let's just go through the process. So I'm a parent, I write a check, my kid's got whatever the user fee is, seventy-five bucks, I don't know. And I do that every season. And then there's a couple of clubs and I do that. And so this goes into an account, the account is growing. And then the school literally needs to use that money to offset four stipends or uniforms or whatever it is that's related, specific to that particular activity. And the money wasn't used. And the money came from...
The regular appropriation.
So it came from the general account, which is so unfair, to the other schools that were using the money that they collected for what, for what it was intended for. And so now we've got a situation with a little pile of money for one school. You don't wanna hurt the school for that pile of money, but how do we resolve it?
Part of how it came about is that the school committee did not have a budget for revolving accounts, which is, this is one. And so they are a big secret and the administration used them for their own purposes to balance various accounts over the years. So now revolving funds are a discussable part and an integral part of our budget. And so we get to talk about what to do about that as part of our overall budget.
But I don't think that the school committee owns, owns the responsibility of that situation.
No, no, but it's a task to figure out.
I mean, and none of us were there, so it doesn't matter. I'm not trying to cover anybody's whatever, but...
No, but again, fixing a problem that was created, but the fact remains that this money is, was paid by families for, for, for their children's athletic, you know, participation.
Right.
But, you know, you can buy, everybody can get new uniforms and hats and socks.
But then again, but then again, now I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the position. Right, right. Now I'm gonna take the position from the other schools because if I'm, you know, MRE and I've been using my fund the way I should, so why should I be penalized for doing things the way I should? And then this other school's got the stockpile of cash that they can use for something extra. I don't know that that's fair.
And we can't reconcile it and give money back?
Well, giving it back would be going into a different revolving account. Say, for example, if it's true that perhaps high school athletic funds were paying for some elementary activity, maybe the elementary fund owes the high school revolving fund.
Can we do that?
But I don't know that that was the case.
I'm saying, it says, oh.
Oh, oh, okay.
We don't know, we don't know until you actually look at the accounts ten years back.
So you can't refund the money to the parents who paid it ten years ago because their kids are no longer in the system, probably.
So back when Kurt was here, I believe, memory not as great as it used to be, but I believe that Tanya had, had come during the meeting and had claimed that her, her accounts for athletics were covering all of, like, the various coaching stipends or they were covering refs and things, and that was coming from, like it was one budget and then it was disseminated through the districts. And that's, that's my recollection, which means it would have been emanating from the high school. So because these schools had their own user fee accounts, but they weren't siphoning up, some, for whatever reason, were, it was getting passed down, if you know what I mean. They were getting subsidized and other schools weren't. It's just a big cluster.
I'm so sorry about all this. I can't believe...
So the question is the chicken and egg thing, right? Is it, the school committee needs to vote to reappropriate something? Or do you just take it and figure that out?
Well, I don't know if you can, because it's a different year, it's a different fiscal year.
So who can find that out? Who would do that? Was it Pat or you, somebody?
Pat's gonna have to go back and take a look and see what we can.
So can you, can you, can you look into that? Because this has to be resolved, although again, okay, one more mystery solved, unfortunately.
What exactly are you asking me to do?
Pardon?
What exactly are you asking me to have to do?
We gotta find out how we resolve this.
It's not just this, though. It's the whole, it's the whole revolving, all the revolving of funds because there's, there's Alice Eaton funds that are sitting there that have, you know, that were donations that have been languishing there. There are funds that have gone out to organizations that don't exist anymore in the district, you know, I mean...
It's a big picture. It's not, it's not just one thing. This is one piece.
But you're right.
So is this going to the...
I think the committee? To be honest with you, Lynn, this, this is part of, now, Pat, we've, part of a bigger picture that we just continue to pick away at to try to, what's the word I can use?
Resolve.
Resolve, yeah.
So, but I, what I'm a little confused about is what you've just tasked Pat with. Which, which little piece have you tasked her with?
I think what we asked her to do was to find out how do we resolve the situation with the Hale Athletic, the massive, um, mine there. What can be done with it?
Hale into Emerson or just Hale?
I have Hale in front of me. If there's Emerson, if there's Alice Eaton, if there's something else, whatever, similar situations globally, fifty thousand foot, what can be done? It'd be great to have that list of what those accounts are.
So part of the, one of the audit report outs that we got was we need to have a policy put in place that would either allow the superintendent or the administration to, to, it's the dissemination of funds. Like, what, how are you going to figure this out? There is no policy that exists to address the unique situation that we have. And the, the audit findings had said that that's what we need to do, is create something to allow. Because right now, everything's wound up. And we need something that's going to allow everything to be unwound, right? And, and that, that is what we need to work with on policy, is come up with either a mechanism to allow Brooke and the administration to do that or for the closing of, however that would work. But we can't, the question is we can't just do it.
But maybe something as simple as a vote.
Yeah, but I, so...
But we're making it up unless we have the, unless we have the framework to do that. We're just kinda like, well, what should we do? And we really need the framework to put the mechanism in place to be able to do whatever we wanna do.
So I, I hear what you're saying. I guess what I'm asking is, is there some structure, some accounting standard that should be followed? And if there is, how do we get from the accounting standard from where we are now to where that needs to be? Because that's bigger than a policy question, right? I mean, that's actual steps that need to be taken.
Well, it could have happened, for example, it could have been just one athletic fund account.
Could have been.
It could have been in two thousand. And it could have all gone into one account. It happened to have been, been one for each school. There's no guide to the administration as to how these accounts ought to be managed. And, and in a sense, we're kind of able, have liberty to figure it out and decide what to do because there hasn't been any, any policy or guidance.
So we kinda have the, from where we are today, the look back and how do we resolve what, where, what those accounts are now. And then to go forward, what's your, what are you gonna, what's your roadmap to get, make sure it doesn't happen, it's actually occurring correctly?
Right, and again, I believe we, we found out that there's actually, it's MGL or some sort of statute that says that the elementarys, K through eight, is supposed to have their own, the high school has their own. So it shouldn't be commangled, period.
But I would expect that to come from Pat, right? She's the business manager, so, so I, I...
Right, so that, that's the guidance.
Yeah.
Well, because I'm not a math person, so, so you know what you have to do, Pat? I know...
Yeah, I know what I have to do. I have to find out what we can do with the funds.
What I heard was, she's gonna find a way to resolve the funds. And where, and somewhere along the way, a policy's gonna be created to make sure that doesn't have to begin.
Susan and Finance are gonna be working together on policy.
We have to identify dormant funds and then how to, what the disposition of the dormant fund would be like. How, how, if it's a dormant fund, it needs to be declared a dormant fund, and then how do you unwind it?
Well, that's Pat, right? So Pat would be identifying the funds.
The dormant fund, and then we have to have a policy that allows the administration to be able to determine what they...
And then it would come back to us. Does that make sense? We'll talk about it. We'll talk about it because we're way off track.
So is your timeline there?
Huh? I think that's probably, I'm...
I should be able to get it by the next meeting.
Next meeting, yeah. Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Don't put another one of these in front of us, please. Oh, god. This is painful. Although I will say, to those of you on the school committee that were talking about this, you were right. So, anyway, moving on. OPEB meeting dates.
Those should be equipped.
Miss, oh yeah, that's what you said the last time.
So we have reached out to Bartholomew and PARZ to separate public agency that provide, public agencies that re, that provide retirement services. The date of October seventeenth, which is a Tuesday, we bring one of them in at five-thirty and one of them in at six o'clock.
I think they said six and six-thirty. Some people couldn't make it at five-thirty.
Oh, is that what it was?
Is that, is that right?
Nielsen.
And the purpose of this is, is they're going to give a brief presentation on OPEB in layman's terms, a short history of their company, give us some districts that are served and how their returns on investment were, guidance on setting up correct internal structure and accounts and recommendations for funding our liability.
Okay, so that's gonna be on the seventeenth because we were given a couple dates and...
What are you doing now? Because you have two different copies coming in.
Two.
Okay, one second. So this is, are they going to be providing materials before the meeting for people to be able to review or would they...
I can ask them that.
Because I think the Budget and Warrant people are gonna be chomping at the bit. Okay.
And I'll just like to say, these people are like fidelity. They're managers of funds.
Yeah.
They're, we still have these other things that we need to do as a school committee in relation to OPEB.
That's the guidance that they should be providing towards what we need to do and how we need to set those funds up.
Maybe. We should take, we should be interested in what they have to say, but we have to make some decisions.
But I've sent this list out to them and tell them this is specifically what we want them to talk about so that we do have the guidance.
Good point. So speak now, I think is, that's, the next, the next sentence would be, so if there's something else here that you're not seeing, speak now, right?
Is that gonna be at six o'clock?
Is, you said six o'clock?
Six and six-thirty is what you said.
That was, do we have those questions?
Okay, I do.
I'm sorry, still... Six and six-thirty.
Six and six-thirty.
Right. Okay, so, so, so October seventeenth at six o'clock. I think one of the things before we go, Lynn, I'll get there.
That's all right.
But I wanna make sure that we're inviting guests to come and speak to us and that if there is something that the committee would like to see that hasn't been discussed, we need to get that out on the table and have that discussion. Because I don't wanna bring people in to speak to us about something that they think they're coming to talk to us about and then get blindsided about something else. So if there's another issue or a topic that needs to be considered, bring it up so we can talk about it.
Sure, we need to, it's desirable to talk about the fact of a trust and who should be the trustees and how to organize the trust. These organizations manage funds when you have a trust. So it could be they have some things to say about OPEB trusts.
I thought they were going to be talking to us about the trust.
So it could be their advice is interesting to us and we don't like it, or maybe we do. But they're not the only organization that thinks about trusts. And that's, that's what I mean about, that is something we have to figure out, decide.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you questions without boiling the ocean.
Yeah.
Okay, is, what is it that we need to do other than identify a reputable firm that does this with fidelity for other districts like us in order to set up the OPEB trust? What are the other, I mean, this isn't, because, because I don't want the school committee to get down into the weeds on how...
Right, so when Dr. Hemmey came out and met with us, there's two main players that are, that he had to recommend. And these are the two main players.
Okay.
These players should, and when I say guidance, I'm not talking about the fiscal guidance of it, but they should also, they should also, according to talking with Dr. Hemmey, to your point, Mark, like, what do we need to do to properly set up the structure as, as a district for being able to put OPEB together? They should be able to provide all of that information and put us on the right track for setting up the proper structure that works. And those are the decisions that will then have to vote to create the various trusts and so forth. But I think they will have that information.
Sure, they will have it.
Yeah.
So, so not really discussed, but something has been done. I mentioned the Treasurer of Plymouth, who actually set up a two-county trust, which has a couple dozen municipalities and school districts as part of the trust. You know, it could be hypothetically, I'm not saying it's a great idea or necessary, but could be all the regional schools want a joint trust. Let that be the common trust. And then there's a manager of the funds, which would be someone like PARZ or Bartholomew. So there's, there's this not quite discussed thing about the trust itself. Do we wanna manage our own, our trust? Do we wanna join with others? It's not, it's not a small conversation. We don't have to boil the ocean about it, but it is potentially worthwhile.
Do you really wanna, do you want the school committee to be in the business of managing a trust, an OPEB trust?
It has to be because it's our OPEB trust. And part of why, you know, the Treasurer of Plymouth or some other entity might have a multi municipality trust is that maybe these... a multi municipality trust is that maybe these districts or municipalities don't wanna be trustees or appoint trustees and then they would like to collaborate with others. So in that sense, you know, we have to appoint our own trustees, you know, some, with some regularity depending on what the trust document says. And that's, you know, that's, you know, we have to structure this entity and it could be what PARZ or Bartholomew has to say is useful and just right for us, but it's not the only thing. That's, that's the main thing I wanna say.
Right.
And, and it could be, maybe it would be useful to, to start a conversation with similarly located organizations, regional school districts could be one, maybe even just our three towns. I'm not, you know, slanting it one way or another, but it might be a worthwhile conversation to have during this process or maybe even after the process, maybe we start the trust and then continue to decide, okay, we really want this piece.
I think it's really important that we remember that this is just us dipping our toe in the water.
Right.
That's, we're at the beginning point of this whole process. We know, I'll speak for myself, I know very little about this. I know the issues that are before us, I, I understand the evaluation and how it works, I get all that. So right now I see this as our first step to bring experts to the table, to talk to the school committee, to just get a little bit of knowledge to ground us. Thank you, that's exactly what I was thinking. So I'm not, I'm not quite there yet because we're just at the beginning point of this.
And maybe what I'm saying is, it's the same in a different way, saying we don't need to rush into something after.
So when we're talking about voting, I don't think we're anywhere near a vote.
Yeah.
If you think, like, I'll, I can speak for myself, I'm so thrilled that we're taking this first step, honestly. It's a big deal to me that we're taking the first step to actually take a look at doing something concrete and I think our towns should be saying, yeah, this is awesome that you guys are doing this.
So I think we need to appreciate too that, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's a version of the aspect collaborative, right? I mean, it's, it's sort of what we're doing this on the OPEB basis, I think Mark's kinda talking about. And I think we need to know the business before we decide we're gonna open up our own shop, if you know what I'm saying. So, so while there, there could be value in that, I'm sure that anybody having to do with the teachers that might be in this room right now might not appreciate the fact that the school committee's gonna run the, the OPEB funds or whatever at the, at the startup, you know? If we get that expert opinion and maybe we get something set up, then that gives us the time to take a good, healthy look at this and say, can we do it better? You know, before we, you, you, because I, I mean, you're, you're building an organization within organization to be able to do that if you're talking about the trustees and so forth and we have a hard enough time in all these towns finding enough people to step forward and, and do some of the other things. And I'm not, I don't, I'm not saying that's not a worthy suggestion, I'm just saying there's a lot to putting that together.
And I, I respect, Mark, what you're saying here because that's probably in some ways where I'm headed to my own thought. We wanna be, and I know the way you are like this too.
I might have a heart attack with that.
No, it's about being thoughtful, it's about taking our time, it's about being well-informed. We are in no rush to do this. The fact is we've got a budget line now that's got this on, like we've taken some concrete steps forward. I don't feel in any hurry, there's no artificial timeline in my mind that says by January 15th we want this done. That, that's not at all where I'm coming from at all. Let's be thoughtful, let's take our time and let's have lots of room for discussion on it.
I just, I just think that these, these two sources are money managers. I don't think we're anywhere near that kind of discussion point. I think what we need to do is have legal counsel or someone come in and talk to us about the establishment of the trusts, how the trusts operate. How we get people to manage the money is, there's a thousand money managers out there, okay? What we need to do is find out how do you structure a trust? Is it better for us to have it as a?
Isn't that what they're gonna be providing us with?
That's what we've asked them to do.
Steve, I think that's what they're gonna be providing us with. However, let's just, just timeout, okay? Just timeout. They're not selling us anything because we're not buying anything. They're giving us, here's how it works, this is what it is. That's what they're doing and in order for them to even get us to that step down the road, they know that they've gotta spoon feed a group of people from communities that make up a school committee board. They get it. So I hear what you're saying, we're not there yet, but I think that these people, that's what they do, like they have, their sales cycle is not five months, I'm sure of it. So I think to your point, we're gonna get that information and we're not there with the selection of who and how and, but I do think this is the first step. I don't think the first step is bringing in counsel because counsel's not, they're gonna tell us to go talk to these people or an entity. And there may be at some point, there may be someone that you wanna bring in from Plymouth. I don't know what you guys wanna recommend, you wanna bring it forward, but I think we have to start somewhere with people who do this for a living and we know we're not gonna sign anything. What is it that, what is it that we don't know? That's what needs to be answered, I think, around the table.
Yeah, I agree.
And so Dr. Hammond, I don't, were you, I don't know who was here.
Steve was.
Okay, so when Dr. Hammond came here, he gave us some, some advice on OPEB. One of his advices were to get us ramped up and get this understanding on the OPEB was to bring one or two of these companies in as, as an informational resource and that's what they're gonna be making us. So it's not a sales pitch that anyone's voting on now.
No, I understand.
We've got a long road that, that's gotta, and then we have to do our due diligence at that point.
Right, but let's have them come in and educate us because you guys, you three, may know more than the rest of us do. You may have a better handle on it, Lynn.
So are we gonna get the list that she has so we know what's being asked of, because she sent this to them? So that these guys can add to it if they feel like they have to?
Well, I wanna be cautious of that because the last thing we're gonna do is bring these groups in that now we know we're not ready to sign on the dotted line and then ask them to do a ton of work for us. We're not gonna be able to do that. I think we let them come, can you just circulate what you?
Sure.
And then if you circulate that and somebody has something specific they wanna know, send it up to me, I'll get it to Pat and then we'll see.
They might have PowerPoints if they could just send us and just review the PowerPoint so if they have any questions and we all need to get ramped up in, in, like, up to speed.
They're not gonna give us our PowerPoints before they come though. I mean, right before they come they will, but they're not gonna say, here's all our material and then.
But there's gonna be an OPEB.
Give us a comment.
There's gotta be something that says this is for an OPEB.
Well, that's on us too. I mean, go out and Google it, you know? We're, let's, I don't know, what's going on tonight? Can you just send out the questions or send it to the group and then if you guys have other things that you're interested in, funnel on it and then we'll, and we'll go from there. But I don't wanna over-engineer this, we're just at the first step.
And plus we have them for a half hour.
Okay, so everybody take a deep, a deep breath because this is get grounded. If you wanna do some of your own research, that Google machine's amazing.
Google machine, I like that.
Okay, moving on, we're late. Subcommittee reports, Neil.
Oh, my God. So, okay, so, last, so last meeting, not today, but last meeting, we went over basically reports which were based on what we had talked about during the offsite that we did over the summer. And so we put together a list of reports, we need to revisit that list before we bring that forward to the school committee because I wanna make sure that the three of us are all synced up and on board with what I've put together. And then today we went over policy recommendations that we would be bringing forward to policy based on the corrective action plan, which is based on the forensic and the management reports. So again, like we had talked about, the framework to, to make everything work. And so we've now got, we've identified those things, we're now pushing them over to policy. We're going to be meeting as a group and sort of redefining things for policy, answering questions they may have and giving them some suggestions and hopefully there's a lot of brand new stuff that's already out there that's addressing a lot of these things.
That's good. That's great.
That's it.
That's awesome.
We're trying to do one or two things per meeting and just laser focused.
But also the content will mostly be a topical list with work to be done. It's, we still have to figure out the details of what.
You wanna be treasurer, don't you?
Okay, thank you, guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Policy, Ms. Weirden.
We're meeting with Dorothy in two weeks to go over another section. And then I just wondered if we, if I make those changes to the bylaws, I already emailed her about those specific questions for next time, if we could do both the bylaws and I was thinking section D, but it seems like we won't be able to meet in time to do that for, in two weeks.
Yeah, because we wanna, whatever, do you have?
We could do section Bs, I have already sent out and it's, it's short and it's, we'll feel good about getting it done.
Send it to us because I just think, I know, I'm just speaking for myself and probably most people at the table. I need time to review that, like, I don't wanna rush it.
I'll send that when I get home, yeah.
So if we, and so if we could get to a point where we get two weeks for each cycle, what you're asking us to review, that would probably be helpful.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I would do that, I just, yeah.
That's great.
And then maybe D after that, right?
Um, Elise isn't here. Thank you, Susan. Elise isn't here, but she did have a report out on CPAC, but she will be reporting out next time at the next meeting. And Personals meeting on Monday, and I don't know if there are any, Lynn.
Task force, I'm Matt Zarro. They had high school walkthroughs and the meeting we had was informational.
Any questions on that? Correspondence of note. Consent agenda, let's assume that the meeting minutes of September 27th, 2017 and the warrants, which I think, does everybody sign them, for October 13th, are approved. Items for next agenda, Pat's gonna go over dormant accounts for us. We're gonna review proposed changes to the bylaws and, and now we've gotta really look at this, I really need you to look at this and make sure everything is okay because there's a lot. We've got the school choice hearing and vote next meeting. That should be, oh, pretty good.
Is that, oh, sorry, is that something, I know last year we talked about that in policy first and then, but, but we don't need to do that, right?
For the school choice?
No.
You were, yeah, it was whether to, remember, it was on the agenda, we discussed it then, we brought it to the school committee, but we don't need to. I just asked because we're redoing policy that day.
No, I don't think, I don't think we need to do that this year. I think basically, but I believe we have to have a public hearing.
We do, right?
And so I think that's the piece that we need to make sure that we give an ample opportunity for, for anybody to come forward and speak at that point. So I think that was, that's the embassy, not really a missing piece, but we need to make sure.
I don't think it would hurt though. I mean, maybe it wouldn't hurt to have policy bring forward a recommendation, although it doesn't belong in policy.
No, it was just, I don't remember why we discussed it last year.
It happens to have been done that way the year before as well.
Yeah.
Policy actually met with some parents who were lobbying and that was a way to have a conversation.
I just, I just asked because we were pretty busy.
That may have been because of, yeah.
So I think this year we need is to have the hearing and then the vote.
And the discussion, okay.
Did we post the hearing?
Yes, Elise is on it.
It has to be 10 days, it's already been sent out to all the newspapers.
And extended day in food service, thank you on that. Sped and MRE student presentation, so we're kinda chalk full.
Superintendent goals to, that should take off.
Yeah.
Never knows.
Okay, and if that works, unless somebody, if you guys have something else you wanna put on the agenda, sweet Lord, help us. But if you do, please feel free to send it forward and if we have to rejigger, we will. And I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second. Sorry, Mark.